Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your second item is to approve the agenda. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is your general manager's report. We'd like to start off with a few recognitions. The first, today's GM report is an operator recognition from Keolis, Lisa Fields. Is she with us today? Do we have Lisa Fields? Oh, Lisa, come on down. Lisa has been a member of the Southern Nevada Keolis team for more than a decade, and during this time, she has driven nearly all of the current RTC routes, and in an exemplary manner. Ms. Fields has received numerous customer service compliments and was recently promoted to a behind-the-wheel instructor in Keolis' safety and training department. On a daily basis, she comes to work with a can-do attitude and is a shining example to her students and peers. She is extremely personable and knows all of her regular riders by their first name. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Lisa Fields for this recognition. Lisa!
No, really, I'd like to thank Keolis for recognizing me after all these years. I appreciate it. I appreciate Frances and Bill, who's the head of our customer service. He really deserved this award, because, you know, it just rolls downhill with us, you know. You just have to love people. What you give is what you give back, you know.
Well, again, I have to point out, she drives the 109, the Maryland Parkway route, which is one of our busiest, busiest routes, and she knows a lot of her customers by name, which I think is a really big deal, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, let me just take a photo. All right, we have one more if we could keep you standing. We'd like to also recognize an MV driver, Mr. Lawrence Stackhouse. Is Lawrence with us? Yay, Lawrence, come on down. Lawrence has been with MV since 2008, and is in an integral part of its training department. He's received numerous compliments for his classroom training session and takes trainees under his wing to ensure their success. Mr. Stackhouse continually works to improve his own professional skills and takes immense joy in watching new operators grow and develop theirs. He's always willing to lend a helping hand and takes pride in everything he does. Again, let's recognize Mr. Lawrence Stackhouse. Hey, we got two Lawrences there.
Well, thank you all, thank you, MV. I would like to give thanks to Mr. Schultzman, Ms. Heath, Mr. Brophy, for recognizing me and the training department, and also I'd like to give a thanks to Mr. Fourier, who afforded me the opportunity to go to training, as well as Mr. Jeff Bethel, who I look as my motivation and inspiration to go ahead and do this, so, thank you all.
Great, thank you. And MJ Mainor, you can go ahead and have a seat for a minute. MJ's gonna take just a couple minutes to share some other news with you regarding an RTC employee.
Great, thank you, Tina. It's a real pleasure of mine to call attention to an RTC employee who's being recognized nationally. Mass Transit has named Jacob Simmons as one of its 40 Under 40. Jacob began using RTC's transit system when he was just 10 years old and became fascinated with transit, specifically bus route design and scheduling. His interest grew, which led to an internship with the RTC when he was just 17 years old.
So, yeah, I just want to emphasize that. So Jacob has been working with us since he was 17 years old.
That's right, that's right. Fast forward, and 12 years later, he is now our senior transit planner. Through Jacob's time at the RTC, he's been involved in planning multiple service changes that involve launching new routes, adding frequency, re-timing routes, and even cutting service. His cost-cautious approach helped develop a plan for service cuts that was the least impactful to our transit customers during very trying times. Jacob strives to make the transit network as efficient as possible to enable the RTC to maximize service to the public. His goal is to ensure that decisions are made based on a complete understanding of the network and the community's needs. The RTC and the Southern Nevada community are fortunate to call Jacob one of our own. He truly cares about our customer. Please join me in congratulating Jacob Simmons.
Yeah, Jacob, are we gonna stand up? Yeah, we'll have him come over to the microphone, we'll have him come over. Oh, we, all right, well, aw. While he's, all right, we'll do that, while he's walking over, I'm gonna emphasize just some of the points that MJ shared, and that is that Jacob has been riding our system since he was 10 years old, and when he was very young, he started writing to us with his ideas for how we could improve our system. And even though he was very young, his ideas actually did get implemented because they were very efficient and effective ideas. So even though he's only been working for us since he was 17, he's been communicating with us for a lot longer.
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much to RTC all these years for the trust they've put in me, giving me a shot, again, starting out of high school. It was quite something, and I've, I never lose sight of the faith and the responsibility that the agency has put in me. I keep that with me every day. I know that the work that we do has such a tremendous impact on so many folks, and it's important never to lose sight of that. So, again, I just want to thank RTC, and especially thank some of the folks that have preceded us, some of the folks that are here today, MJ, Tina, Cindy, and, again, many of the mentors that I had in my first years at RTC for everything, so, thank you so much.
I'd like to point out, give you kudos, he also put himself through school, he's received a master's degree as well, so, working full-time.
Simmer on Memorial, go Spartans!
That concludes our recognitions. I'm gonna ask MJ to continue to brief you on a few other items that we've got.
Thanks, Tina. I'm happy to share with you that the American Public Transportation Association is honoring the RTC's Mobility Training Center with this year's Innovation Award. Recipients of this award are recognized for demonstrating innovative concepts in public transportation services. The MTC opened in January and is the only one of its kind in the western United States. It's a unique blend of paratransit certification assessment, mobility training, and blindness skills training, all under one roof. When the concept of the MTC was first discussed, we knew immediately that we wanted the facility to be an engaging and inviting structure that fosters hands-on and successful learning in a controlled and realistic environment. Southern Nevadans now have an innovative option to gain mobility and independence. We're very proud to receive this prestigious recognition and even prouder of the services we provide at the MTC to the community. And I'll move on to our paratransit no-show policy. After receiving direction from the board and input from customers, the RTC is updating its no-show policy in conjunction with recommendations from the Federal Transit Administration, which will be more flexible and favorable to our certified paratransit clients. So notable changes to the no-show policy include being able to cancel rides up to two hours before the start of a client's pickup window, rather than the day before the scheduled trip, assigning suspensions based on a combination of points and percentage of trips rather than just points, makes it more equitable, and streamlining the appeal process to be more timely. This updated policy will go into effect on October 1st. And finally, Nathan Goldberg, our manager of transit planning, will now provide you with an update on our proposed service changes occurring in November.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Commissioners, Nathan Goldberg, RTC staff. Staff held a 30-day public comment period throughout the month of August to solicit feedback on our proposed service changes that will go into effect on Sunday, November 6th, 2016. More than 140 comments were received through various media, as well as at two public hearings that were held at the Bonneville Transit Center and the South Strip Transfer Terminal. Customer takeaway flyers were also posted on all 400-plus fixed route vehicles to inform riders of the proposed changes. All feedback was reviewed and responded to and taken into consideration with the proposal you have before you. Staff proposes launching new Route 122, South Maryland Parkway, Horizon Ridge. There are a total of 65,000 residents and 33,000 jobs located along the proposed route. Many of these residence and employment sites do not currently have access to any other public transit. With the board's approval, Route 122 will operate every 30 minutes during weekday daytime hours and every 60 minutes during evening hours and on the weekends. The geographic boundaries are from the South Strip Transfer Terminal to the Green Valley Ranch Hotel Casino, as well as the district. In addition to the proposed launch of the new route, staff is recommending schedule changes on 27 routes, the addition of 24-hour service to Route 105, Martin Luther King, frequency increases on 10 routes, geographic changes or extensions to six routes, most notably Route 113, North Las Vegas Boulevard, being extended to the Michael Callahan Federal Medical Center, Route 203, Spring Mountain, extended west to the Town Center area, which is to the University of Phoenix, as well as Roseman University, and also Route 212, Sunset, being modified to service Union Village and the New Henderson Hospital. There will also be span of service increases, allowing earlier morning or later evening service on 10 routes, and finally, the ADA paratransit service area will be adjusted to the mandated three-quarter of a mile boundary along fixed route services. This will result in 74 new clients being added to the paratransit service area. Those clients would be able to start scheduling trips on Sunday, November 6th. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you might have.
Question?
Mayor Goodman.
Yes, thank you, great report, very exciting, I can't wait to get on the Martin Luther King one, hopefully 24 hours a day, that's great. Question for you, the route that's going out to the hospital, to the VA hospital, how often is that running? And then again, because I know I've asked MJ in the past, the alternative from the end of the route to the entrance of the hospital?
Yes, it would be every 15 minutes from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. to the hospital. During the remaining hours, we'd still be using the same boundaries that we have now.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner.
Follow-up on that, I actually, Nevadans for a common good years, a year or so ago, two years, I can't even remember now, asked me to ride from Boulder City all the way down, and I want to thank you, because we did not have enough turnaround time for people at the transfer station to stop and use a bathroom. And once you ride that, you find out that they were, it was a legit argument that was made, so I want to say thank you. I believe that you made that schedule change, so that people could transfer from one to the other, they gave them like three minutes, and there's just no way. The other thing I think you also did, and the mayor raised that issue about the drop-off part, but to make sure that the drivers called out when they were there, sometimes it's a long ride and people fell asleep, and they'd be sleeping in the bus, and they'd be turning around going back, and they'd never gotten off, so I know that they put that into motion as well, so just thank you for that part of it. And then the no-show policy, that was brought up at our last meeting, so thank you for the quick response, that we modified that policy, so it's more reflective of what needs to be into play. So thanks for listening to the constituents testify. Thank you.
Good comments.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mayor Portman.
Thank you. I'm really pleased to call out the new route 122, which will come down Maryland Parkway and will serve the Henderson community going down Horizon Ridge, and, you know, there's a lot of folks that work at places like Levi Strauss and the new Toronto Bakery that'll be built, and we know for a fact that the Levi Strauss employees, most of them don't drive, don't own cars, and come from Las Vegas and North Las Vegas, so this will actually help them get to work in a more efficient way, instead of having to walk from Eastern Avenue all the way down St. Rose to get to their place of employment. This is a huge addition to the Henderson community, and then obviously coming down Horizon Ridge and serving Green Valley and Green Valley Ranch will really make a significant difference.
Well, we have to extend our appreciation to you, because you did bring the Levi group to come meet with us and help us coordinate that route, so thank you for that introduction.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And then also just some additions to routes that include being able to touch some of the senior citizen facilities to help seniors maybe get out of paratransit and be able to use the actual transit service, so we're excited about that.
And again, kudos to the city of Las Vegas, Rob Hura in particular, making us very much aware of the fact that that's an area that we needed to be focused on, so, thank you.
So thank you very much, thank you for adding these routes.
Other comments or questions? Thank you for the presentation.
All right, that concludes your general manager's report. Next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report, Director Rudy Malvaban.
Thank you, Tina. As we all know, the Southern Nevada Tourism Investment Committee is gonna be meeting later today and discussing the stadium site, or possible sites that will be shortlisted. What NDOT is planning to do is take the two sites that the developer had communicated that they're interested in on Russell Road, and, as well as the tourism committee's sites, and do some further assessment of the traffic impacts and what improvements are needed on the freeways and the arterial streets. So still some more work to be done. Very quickly, I know that the governor wants to make a decision soon after that recommendation is received from the committee. Wanted to thank the city of Las Vegas for their support of the epidemic campaign for pedestrian safety. I know that some of the staff there from Public Works were involved in the media campaign and the outreach with news reporters, and just the, putting in those decals on the sidewalks gets people to think of their responsibilities as pedestrians, and also the media campaign covers the responsibilities of drivers as well, to watch out for pedestrians.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I forgot to bring Clifford with me, we have, Clifford is involved with this, so we're just really grateful.
That's great.
No, the book, the book.
And Monday is our, next Monday is our Transportation Board meeting, and we will have some good news on the short list of teams that submitted pre-qualification statements for the Apex, the Garnet interchange improvements for that design-build project that's anticipated. So that's, as a reminder, that's the improvements at the interchange with I-15 and US-93, and the widening of US-93 north for about five miles. So I know that four teams had submitted, and we'll have the announcement of the ones that are making the short list on Monday. On Boulder Highway, I'm pleased to see that we approved on the consent agenda and the Unified Planning Work Program, that's the list of planning studies and studies that are federally funded, with some of the planning funds that the Federal Highway Administration supplies to both NDOT and the RTC of Southern Nevada, but the Boulder Highway project is one of those in there, and it's a very important project. We've been getting some requests for surplus property, relinquishment of property, and we have different bearing right-of-way widths through that corridor, so we want to definitely get with Clark County, city of Henderson, RTC of Southern Nevada, and NDOT to discuss what's the vision for the future, and I know that this study's gonna go a long way in establishing that, looking at the different modes of transportation along that corridor, but it's time to start collaborating on the future Boulder Highway and make some of those decisions that are affecting some of these, our processes, to review those requests from developers that want some of that property relinquished, and without this kind of study, we really need to know what's the vision for that corridor, so that we can make those decisions on those requests from developers. So we are working collaboratively with the RTC. RTC will take the lead on that study, but we're all gonna work together and do our part as the city, the county, NDOT, and RTC to really advance that corridor and the plan for that corridor. So that's pretty much the, I have one other thing to report, was the Federal Highway Administration, every August, their fiscal year ends on September 30th, so every August, they start looking at what's money that has not been spent or obligated, kind of set to projects and committed to by other state DOTs, and they redistribute that money, and NDOT requested 20 million in redistributed obligation authority, which is not new money, but it's just the money that was available, or spending authority that's available, and we received all 20 million that we requested, so it's gonna go to some of the, we've had some change orders on I-11, we've had some projects that already were underway, so it doesn't really finance a new project, but it does give us some flexibility to look at financing decisions for other projects in the coming fiscal year, so that was good news, that we had received 20 million. That's a lot more than we usually receive from the Federal Highway Administration in spending authority. And that concludes the Director's Report from NDOT, and I'll take any.
Commissioner G.
Thank you, Rudy. So that'll free up, so you might be able to redistribute then some other dollars, is what you're kind of saying on that part of it.
It allows us to clean up some older projects and address some of the, maybe change orders on some major projects, so it does give us some flexibility for the future.
So you mentioned I-11 is...
So you mentioned I-11 is what changes are coming into play and what's the status of the arsenic in any of that part?
So the issue with I-11 was the naturally occurring asbestos, which we have not really seen. We've been monitoring it, the air and the personal monitors that our workers and the contractor workers have on their, to see if there's any sampling of and finding of any naturally occurring asbestos. We're not seeing it to that level, to that extent. But the major changes-
Sorry, I said arsenic, it was an A word.
Yes, I figured that you meant the asbestos. So we're not finding it, but the major changes, we're looking at, there was a utility access road called Silverline Road that we feel in order to have continued utility access for maintenance of the, I think it was a gas line on that road and emergency response to any development that's in there or planned in the future, that we feel that we should have a bridge on the Interstate 11 alignment over that road. We were initially going to build an embankment over it and have the gas line relocated, but we felt that it was best to maintain that emergency response access and utility access on Silverline Road. So that will be maintained as a, it's not a public road, but it will be maintained for access by the utility company.
So it won't be a full-blown bridge, but you'll have that part of it?
It will be a, just a very short span bridge. I think that it's going to be a steel bridge, but the, it's not a public road publicly maintained by the county or the city or NDOT.
Okay. And then where are we at with any transferring of highways in our jurisdictions over to those local governments?
So we are continuing the discussions with Clark County on the 215 Beltway. I believe it's from Summerlin Parkway all the way through to the Henderson Spaghetti Bowl Interchange. And as more improvements are made in that northern part of the Beltway, we'll have that on the table too for negotiations, but-
So possibly when FRI passes, that could be some allocation, because maybe it's time where we, because we always have to have the standard cities, county to bring the roadways up to our standard before you turn them over, and that's always been part of the discussion. So maybe there could be a lump sum dollar just given to each of us and said, okay, you got Charleston, you've got Lake Mead, but here's money to go along with bringing it up to date.
What we're trying to do is avoid the dollars exchanged and just look at, take as-is, but look at lane miles. So if we give up some of the local streets that are state highways, look at how many lane miles are on a six-lane road versus the Beltway and try to be, have some equity. We know that the Beltway has bridges and other things that are unique to that type of facility than compared to Sahara Avenue, for instance, which is half county, half city of Las Vegas in jurisdiction. So, but we were going to use a two-step process as proposed to take the Beltway as-is, county or the city of Las Vegas with respect to Summerlin Parkway would take our state highway as-is. And we know that it takes time to get all the legal descriptions together and get all that reviewed and embedded and checked for errors and it's just a long process for that right-of-way, the actual right-of-way descriptions and legal descriptions. So we're going to do a two-step process where maintenance responsibilities transfer for the entities for those roads that we're transferring to the county or the city of Las Vegas. And then subsequently, how long it takes, it might take a year or two to get all the legal descriptions, depending on the roads that are exchanged for the Beltway or Summerlin Parkway. So we're going to try to do, avoid the money exchange and just do maintenance for maintenance, you know, take over maintenance responsibilities while the other entity takes over our state route. And then eventually, the Transportation Board will be asked to approve the actual transfer of the land, the property.
Status of Boulder Highway pedestrian issues that affects mine, Commissioner Scous and Councilwoman's. I know we've had discussions about the pedestrian access, better lighting, push buttons, narrowing, where is that all at?
I know that there's an initial group of projects that are either, have gone out to bid or going to go out to bid shortly. And I know that there's other projects, I had, I do have some information from staff that I can forward to you specifically to some of the projects for pedestrian safety in Las Vegas.
Maybe the three of us at least, or the chair if you want, so that way, okay. And then finally, and I apologize, are you aware of, at any point in time, 20-plus years ago, that somebody recommended an interchange for Hollywood Boulevard to be connected to Henderson? I can't find any roadway other than an old wash. And before Stallion Mountain went in, that was a roadway that connected to Henderson, but they vacated the road long before I got here. Are you aware of any discussion? I keep getting emails.
I'd have to look, there might be some of the old timers that, I'm sure Dennis would-
Send out feelers, I've got Dennis looking too, because I don't remember that as a conversation. Okay, thank you.
We can look at it from our side too.
Mayor Goodman?
A couple of questions, one's for you, Mr. Malphabon, but through our Mr. Chairman. What are the routes, since you've been asked to explore Russell Road and the two sites for the potential stadium? What type of routage, RTC bus routage do we have currently up and down Russell East-West or West-East?
Sure, we just recently took a look at that, MJ and her team did. We have, we don't have a Russell Road route currently. We have a north-south route, the Valley View Route, that does for a very short period travel along Russell Road. But currently, we do not have any east-west routes along that Russell Road.
To take that one step further through you, Mr. Chairman, coming from the university to either the Valley High or the west side of the I-15, I gather therefore there's nothing at this point. That is going to be asked. So just to give you an alert moving forward with this perhaps, that connectivity is important. But to get back to you, Mr. Malphabon. The exiting going south on the I-15, as we get over to the right to take Russell or to stay on it to go to the 215. It's always, I mean now with nothing, it's packed. So my question to you is, Russell, I gather east and west, is not an NDOT project. But to widen that piece that goes where we exit to pick up the 215 and Russell interchange, that's, that would be yours, any flyovers, that would all be NDOT, or no? Or better signage too? Well, I'm talking, first the question is, is that NDOT and to what point? Because I've got four prompts to this.
The, what we call the collector-distributor road or that frontage road next to the interstate, that's NDOT responsibility to look at any widening that would be needed. The, any of the carpool or HOV drop ramps, so in the tourism, I mean, I'm sorry, the Transportation Investment Business Plan, TIBP, we had looked at some of these drop ramps at Hacienda, Harmon, Mead, a new connection at Mead and also at the Beltway. So those improvements are NDOT's responsibility. If you look at Russell Road, NDOT only has responsibility for the portion that's within the, near the interchange. And then when you get down to the next cross street, that's kind of where NDOT's ends. We have control of access at each interchange along the interstate and it usually extends down to the major cross street, but sometimes it stops a little bit earlier when there's a major approach to a casino or something like that.
And if I may continue, Mr. Chairman, on that exit then, so part of that would be NDOT funding, which again probably means it has to go back to the federal government for environmental study before you touch it? And everything else you have to do on any I-15, anything?
Yes, there's usually, there's always an environmental assessment required, but it depends on the level of how complicated the project is. When we do something that's major, it's an environmental impact statement, which could take years. When it's something like widening an existing road, it could be an environmental assessment or even, we've done widening of roads with the lowest level of approval of categorical exclusion, which is a very rapid turnaround in environmental, when it's not requiring any additional right-of-way. If it's, it can be expanded within the existing right-of-way, it's still considered a low-level environmental document and approval process.
So that would be a state funding rather than a local county funding at that point? Would that remain then, if there were a flyover created there and then bus routing would have to be there and connectivity to UNLV? I can see those at two different pockets of money?
Well, we usually, we usually work collaboratively with whatever sources of funding are available. If it's RTC, counties, whatever city is involved. But we typically will just put our heads together and try to get something. If it's needed and it has to be prioritized and accelerated, we'll try to find the best way to fund a project. Typically, NDOT has some of the deeper pockets with the, we feel that the fuel revenue indexing will pass in November. That'll give the RTC and the local entities down here additional funding. But it's something that we collaborate together to find out what's the best way to fund some of these projects and which ones need to happen the fastest.
Okay, thank you very much. I just know this is really out there and it affects an awful lot of different pockets. Routing, the university, I mean so many things as we go forward with it. And I'm sure the NDOT piece, as it connects to any federal funding, means it takes a longer period of time. So just wanted to ask, thank you.
Yes Mayor, if it involves the interstate, it's going to involve the Federal Highway Administration anyways, even if it's a lower-level environmental document. But they understand that with the needs of Las Vegas and Nevada in general, they try to turn around things rapidly and try to make decisions locally as best as possible in their division office in Carson City.
Thank you.
Rudy, to follow up on the Cintec, be it the stadium and/or the convention center, I know there's been consistent dialogue as far as whatever those numbers end up being and whatever funding sources identified, that the transportation infrastructure needed for the convention center project and a potential stadium has been included. So it's not one of those, oops, we forgot what kind of infrastructure investment. I know that you've been part of that, Tina's been part of that. We're keeping a close eye because we don't want to take for the convention center, we don't want to lose the ability to tap into that funding. When that expansion takes place, any infrastructure improvements need to be included in the original funding. So that's not going to be a separate RTC or city or county aspect, especially in light of the stadium wherever it's located. If it moves forward, we have to make sure that that infrastructure investment is part of the funding formula.
I know that the stadium costs are likely to include the very, the improvements that are needed very close to the stadium. But something that's already planned in our regional transportation plan here in Southern Nevada, most likely it's not going to include those types of costs such as an interchange that's a month, you know, a couple miles away. Or some of these HOV drop ramps, for instance, we're already in the planning phases and anticipated in our 20-year plan. We were looking at, I think that from the TIBP, it was anticipated that some of these improvements would be in the next kind of five-to-10-year range. So I don't think that the stadium costs include those types of improvements. It's only the immediately adjacent improvements to the transportation system that are included.
And we just want to make sure the immediate adjacency is adequate to fund those immediate adjacent infrastructure needs.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interject, as I sit on that committee, only the onsite costs will be absorbed by the developers. The rest of it's going to come to the county and Southern Nevada to pay for the infrastructure for the roadways to get to our busing and move people around. And Chairman Sisalak has said it again and again, what are the costs? And it really is, it's anything beyond a specific site inures to us.
Only if we accept it that way.
Well, exactly. Commissioner, you bring up a good point. We should not, especially representing our, we should not accept the fact that it's going to be onsite infrastructure. You know, a billion, two billion, you start talking real money and there'll be tens of millions of immediate adjacent infrastructure that needs to be done. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure whatever legislation moves forward clearly identifies the responsibility of the project to help mitigate those costs. I know everybody's keeping an eye. And then just on a personal note, I moved in my youngest daughter down in California. And I hadn't driven down I-15 to California a long time, that's probably why I've been happy the last 10 years. But the condition of California roads compared to what we have in Nevada is just remarkable. It's the most striking condition that I saw driving down and back. It's just amazing. Compliment to NDOT and everything we do on our interstate. My goodness, those roads down there. And traffic, there's real traffic in California, there's real traffic. But thank you because it was just so nice to cross that state line and get back onto real roads. All right, that personal note aside, we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Next is your consent agenda, which is made up of items five through 49 and may be taken in one action.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And your last item is item number 50, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, the gentleman that was here earlier, please. And if you would, just state your name for the record. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Let's see, I live on the streets of Las Vegas currently, but I go by JoJo. Want to say that this room is obviously filled with quite a few problem solvers, so that's good news. Professionals, so that's great news. I'm going to make this brief, this first segment, but I'm going to try to come back in some additional meetings and reinforce the base messaging here. And so I figure four times, God willing. So I have a little prayer, just want to say for me, dear Jesus, please speak for me to these people, thank you. The topic of conversation is earthquakes that this area can expect. There's quite a few different kinds of earthquakes that this area can expect. Some are small and some are quite large. The main one that I think that we'll discuss quickly today here is the moderate earthquake, which knocks out the overpasses to some degree in the freeway systems. Could make the runways uneven. You may have a power outage and broken pipes for pumping water. And so that's the main concern there is that in a moderate earthquake, if suddenly there was no drinking water here in the desert in the middle of summer, the entire population just being rocked by an earthquake, which has disrupted the standard processes in place, would die of thirst, literally, within three days. I say, well, let me say that the federal and state guidelines on the amount of water each individual in this area should have is one gallon of water per day. Now, they say three to seven days. I would say on day eight, you'd be hoping it wasn't Katrina in a response. So with the overpasses potentially down and all the freeways needing to be checked, runway unserviceable, you could think you might be able to helicopter enough water in for 10 million people, but I'm not even sure you could organize that much water. So literally, people would just be dying in the streets, in the buildings, waiting for water. Now I know the good captains of the good ship, Las Vegas and area, would stick through it. They know now that if such an event happened and I didn't prepare it for everyone else, I didn't prepare it for myself and my family. No helicoptering out, so to speak, off the sinking ship. And I only say that to help spur on the thinking, how can we provide 42 million gallons of water, a gallon a day, for 21 days per person and do that efficiently? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome, sir.
Dennis Hennessy.
Good morning commissioners, I'm back. I just wanted to take a few moments to kind of update you guys. Last time I was here, Commissioner Brown, you were on vacation, Commissioner Gee, you were on vacation, Commissioner March, you ran the meeting, my family came up and I guess made a pretty big impact. My family came up and I guess made a pretty big impact. Because what's occurred since my granddaughters got up here in tears, talking about drivers being assaulted and we need your help, a lot has happened. But the first thing I wanna clarify, when I get up here and speak to you guys, I don't get up here and speak to you as a Keolius employee or as an MV employee. I get up here and speak as a representative for the union for all of our drivers. So, when I get up here and talk about safety or cleanliness or whatever the hot button might be, I speak for all of our drivers, for all of our close to 800 drivers that are in the city. Just a recap of what happened since that meeting, I kind of given it three months to kinda let the, the air cool down a little bit. A lot positive has happened. I can say that Cecil Fielder, the safety director for Keolius, has really tackled a lot of the problems that I came up and talked about in terms of educating drivers, providing meaningful monthly safety meetings. And he took that to task right off the bat. And he now conducts our safety meetings. And it's my understanding that Tim Fournay does the same thing with MV. A lot of the work that's been done, I can see that almost immediately there was changes in, in Allied Barton's response time and putting people out there. I know that MJ and her group have put together some of the fair enforcement deals. I'm working with MJ and with Cecil Fielder, with Tim Fournay and Allied Barton to try to put a quarterly meeting together between the union or our drivers, just to let you guys know. But you know what? We need your help, too. There's a lot of changes that MJ wants to do and, and we've seen potential signage for the buses to talk about fair enforcement, stuff like that. We need your help first. We need some sort of enforcement, A, on the penalties. It's a felony if you assault a bus driver. It's not a misdemeanor. Your people have come up and showed me statutes and stuff, stuff like that. But you know what? The DA and the police department do not make it a felony. We need you guys' help to do whatever you need to do in the legislature to get it changed to a felony. I noticed money was brought up. Boy, getting, getting to the, to up north, up to Carson City, you guys all wanna snap, let's get it done. Well, you know what? We need you guys' help to get the legislature to change and, and make sure it is a felony. Let's give Allied Barton, or at least their charlie units, their roving units, police powers. Because if one guy gets arrested for assaulting a bus driver, it ends. It ends everywhere. I'm telling you, it ends. And then the very, the very last thing would be to say thank you. Because you guys have, you know, Tina, you and your staff have, have reacted and both companies have reacted to it. So, the only thing I'd like to see added is so that you guys are aware publicly the number of incidents that occur as part of the general manager's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Don DeHare, and I'm here once again on some major problems, but some, some of, there's a couple of the problems that are really urgent from your point of view of a very serious nature. And I was at the doctor's office a few months back and he said, you gotta have that surgery. So, I delayed, delayed because the other doctor said, you won't survive it. And so, finally, I figured out I better take, get the surgery. So, I had the surgery done two months ago. The VA had me in a hospital for a week. It was too complicated. They sent me to Sunrise Hospital and they did the surgery. It's called Impella, like Chevrolet Impella. And they put you on life support. The reason I'm telling you this is now I need another surgery, but another doctor refuses me to do this other surgery. And so, they're gonna send me to Nellis Air Force Base, to the McCarran Moffett Hospital. And the problem is, I have to go across the street to the air force base and get a special card for them to do all this stuff, signed by the people at Nellis to allow me to get on base. So, I called for RTC and VA to take me to Nellis Air Force Base. They refused. It has to be a medical appointment. And this is one of the hundred, 200 things that I'm, I'm aware of, that nobody at this table is aware of any of these kinda problems, that I can't get inside Nellis Air Force Base. So, I got my scooter, that's my scooter to back wall. Okay, that's a little side issue. I'm gonna get into this two serious issues. You have civilian clothes on these people that are on the bus undercover or whatever, maybe they're not undercover, and they're carrying a gun. And I'm in the wheelchair in the pocket on the bus, and this man jumps in who I've seen before. He jumps off the bus, he yells at people, he's got a gun on his hip, and he has no identification whatsoever. And he, if the bus driver's late, he will take the ropes and tie him up for the bus driver, you know, anchor me to the floor. But he has no clothes on. I don't know who he is, but he's got that gun on his hip. And you know all the trouble, we don't have to get into that about who's gonna shoot you, you know? And I go through all this stuff. I'm 82 years old now, and I have to put up with this kinda crap. I don't want nobody with a gun telling me what to do. He refused to move. He went, went be off the aisle into the straps, standing up to have a better view. But when he turned around, I saw the gun. And I've seen him in the past or other ones like him in civilian clothes. And they're jumping on and off the bus, telling the people on the sidewalk what to do, telling me what to do, and then buckling my thing up because they're late. So, but one last, I need one moment for this big one. Here's the big one. There's gonna be a race riot here in Las Vegas. Every casino will call you. It's, it's that bad. It is that bad. And some of the people have guns. I've only seen guns on a person once or twice, and I was scared to call on the cellphone for the police because the guy is sitting right by me. And when you're sitting at the handicap spot, you hear everything that's going on. You got a good, good opinion of what's happening. But you gotta do something about this race riot. The, the people who are racist are, are almost predominantly black, who are sitting in the handicap and refuse to move. I've told, we had a meeting at, that last time I was here, and you cannot have people refusing because the word is out, just tell the driver, I'm not moving. And that's what's happening. I can't get on the bus, so I have to challenge the driver. Where's the, what do you mean, those three kids, 18-years-old, you know, got the sneakers on and all that stuff? So, I would go for one more meeting, but I have to tell you the last thing. I reported this to the government, federal government. You're gonna have every agent, about eight agencies coming down on you, especially Chris, Commissioner. One of the bills the VA paid was $80,000 to the, to UMC. I've never been to UMC. I've been to, taken a senior to go there. $80,000 they got. The inspector general, everybody is on this case, on my case. Where did all this money go? $337,000 we're talking about for my surgery. I need another surgery at Nellis, I can't get on the base because you won't take me there. So, I have to go to Craig Road and ride my scooter. Hopefully, that building at Nellis Air Force Base is not far back, just to get in the hospital, which is across the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Good morning.
Good morning. Albert Berry Johnston, Las Vegas Road Construction Watch. We have a few things to go over with you guys. I wanna first thank you and Chairman Brown and Sisalak for going through and put, trying to work on a cap with the FRI. Some of the, the information's quite confusing. One of the items on the, on your website says it's gonna be about 20, 25 cents per day for motorists. Does that include people taking public transportation? Are they getting a nick on that, too? Or is it just the people that are driving in cars? Also, that number is almost based like an Obamacare number. I know they said it's not gonna go up, but my health insurance went from $116 to over 400. The same thing's gonna happen with this and the PPI. So, we wanna be careful and also make sure that, that information is out there in a way that all of Las Vegas can digest it. I know there's a lot of confusing information on there that's hard to read, and I don't think people really understand what the FRI means and what it's actually gonna cost them. And that I don't believe it's, public transportation people aren't getting nicked for this, but their gas and, you know, some way that, that bus is moving, so they should have to pay, too. Public recorded meetings, audio recordings, they need to, I'd like them to put that next to the agenda items so that all the different items that are, all the different meetings are, we're able to hear them so we don't have to leave our jobs when we wanna go to a utility commission meeting and start listening to them, to find out that the communication between the utilities is really bad and the RTC, and there is no system currently for everybody to use a centralized database, so it's easy for everybody to access this data. And speaking to Sue just now, I found out there's a new RTC employee that goes and checks out the Seeing Orange campaign complaints. That's awesome. I wanted to see if you guys would change that from a reactive to a proactive position and task that person, give them like, all they need's a Chromebook, $200 Chromebook and a camera and some method to upload while they're driving around, to take pictures of these projects and then to upload them to the website for all of us to see, for all of you to see, for the project managers, the inspectors. Because your inspectors, every single one of your municipalities, don't have time to go out there and look at everything. And if the young lady could pull up the photos that I have available, I'm gonna show you some instances where a shuttle bus leaving Swinson fell through the, fell through that hole. So, the shuttle bus had to wiggle its way, reverse drive, reverse, this came from an Uber driver to our lost, our Facebook page. The shuttle bus was rocking back and forth, trying to get out, it finally freed itself. And the people, the Uber guy went out and started putting the cones around and stuff to make sure that it's three times Swinson was closed because they haven't properly put those steel plates on there. But your inspectors don't have time to go out and inspect them. So, what we're asking for, one of the things is to have those. There's quite a bit more information, but I guess I'll bring it up at the next meeting. One of the major things that I really need, that I would really ask for you to do, is to put some ethics guidelines in the way that the contractors and the lobbyists and the vendors are working with the RTC in each one of your municipalities, so that there's some kind of disclosure. If, for instance, one of your employees is in a relationship with a contractor or lobbyist or a vendor, that should just be disclosed, just as you guys have to disclose if you meet with a lobbyist or if you're in a relationship with them in any other way than what your duties are while you're working through your job. So, I'm interested in hearing your feedback on that and see if we can get those done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one will close this portion of public comment, this meeting is adjourned.